Can reconvene our meeting to open session. The board has been in executive session since 6:00 to discuss some personnel matters and contract negotiations. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Will O'Beir.
Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moyerdy.
Jonathan Fishburne.
Wendy Sampson.
Judy Kehoe.
Do we have any PIG students with us tonight? Welcome. I can tell it's the beginning of the quarter. Your obligation is to stay until 9:00 or until our meeting is done, whichever comes first. And there are sign out sheets up here for you guys to sign out. And if you have a piece of paper that needs a signature, just see any of the board members and we'll help you out. First on the agenda is our approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the January 22nd, 2020 regular board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that passes, do we have anybody here tonight from the Student Senate?
Hi. I'm Isabella Meritato from Student Senate at the high school. This Saturday is our snowball dance and we have been selling tickets for that all week this week. At the dance, there will be a raffle and we will also sell pizza and snacks. We are trying out a new scanning system for students to check in. It's hopefully going to be quicker. So students who bought their tickets in advance will get an email with a barcode that they can use to scan into the dance, or they can use their student ID card or ID number. For the backpack program, we received a pallet of food from Hannaford and we will be receiving a pallet from them every week. So that's very good. And also, big thank you to Glenmont. They donated some food from their food drive to the backpack program. We are in the process of trying to reach out to different people to help donate to the courtyard project that we're working at at the high school. And finally, on Monday, Student Senate along with different faculty members at the high school wore T-shirts in honor of Black History Month. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And do we have anyone here from the middle school tonight? I don't think so, but I'm just double checking. Next is our superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to congratulate one of our social studies teachers, Preya Kristina Kennedy. She was selected, she was recently appointed to the Choose Champions, which is an educator fellowship. And it's a group of 41 educators nationwide who will be working on ways to help integrate conversations about race in their classrooms. So I'd like to congratulate her. Construction, the high school LMC is finally open. I hope that all the students have been able to check it out. It's great. It's worth the wait. Also, the student help desk, or we call it the mini Apple Store, is also open. I've heard nothing but positives. Everyone seems to like the new space. It's got a lot of flexibility, so it's great to have that open. D-122 at the high school is, which was the LMC, is now under construction. That's anticipated to be a couple of months, so I'm thinking three months. And then, high school bathrooms are being renovated. Their A Wing is being finished up and they'll start B Wing. And construction at Elsmere, that locker area, office area near the gym, is supposed to be starting relatively soon. Also, we did, or the community should be receiving highlights. It's a winter highlights. Last year, we decided we wanted to do a few more mailings. It was one of our goals in the community section of the strategic plan, to try and get more frequent communication out to the entire community. So even though we tried to be green and reduce paper, we do feel that sending something home now and again is something that is meaningful to the community. So we're anxious to see what kind of feedback we get on that. And I know that there's predicted to be bad weather, so any students who want to know if we're delayed or snow day tomorrow, if you follow me on Twitter, you will find out before anybody else. That's my announcements.
So sad that's how you have to get followers.
The last snow day, I can't tell you how many more followers I got after I posted that. It's amazing. My phone was blowing up. They're all adding you right now.
Next up is our board report. And I just want to say, we just had a chance to take a look at the new LMC and walk through the space in there and think it looks great. And I just want to say a thank you to all of the library staff that got all those, got the books back on the shelves and were getting everything in order, and everybody else who helped, helped get that open. I think it's going to be a great space. The policy committee also met since our last meeting and you will see a whole bunch of policies on the agenda tonight farther along, which pretty much sums up what we did at the meeting. Anyone have anything else they'd like to share?
Sure. So. I was able to attend the Black History Month kickoff event on Monday at the middle school, though it was sponsored, I think, by some student groups at the high school. And Richard Haynes talked about his experience as a very young child, sort of working the fields alongside his parents in the South, and his experiences from then on and how he grew to understand that education was the key to success. But I want to say that the favorite part of the evening for me was the African drumming group in the beginning, which were really incredible. And I think we need to try to mix more cultural events like that. It was, it was just, maybe they happen and I haven't been there, but I love that. And the art in the high school, I loved walking around and looking at that as well. And today was the community service day at Hammergrail, the kids helping kids. So they made lunches to donate to veterans and it's always a good time.
I also attended the Dr. Haynes's presentation at the middle school the other night and I didn't see you or I would've said hi. But yeah, it was just a fascinating take. There was also a little bit from a guidance, no, an admissions counselor at the University of New Hampshire. So the talk was kind of aimed at eighth graders who are looking at, you know, what they need to be thinking about to get ready for college. And it's never too early to start and the big takeaway was really to just, you know, work hard and show an upward trend in your academics as you get older through eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. University of New Hampshire really takes your senior year pretty seriously, so no slacking off.
Chris.
Last week was math and science night at Hammergrail. It's really neat that there are so many kids that want to do math and science that they have to have three separate nights for it. It was really well organized. I know the PTA put a lot of time into it, so thank you for that. Tomorrow, there are a couple of events. The first is, there's a lip sync rehearsal and I'm bringing that up because you may know this person as our board president, but one of the many other incredible things she does is help with the Hammergrail lip sync and do an amazing job, so thank you for everything you do. And then, Capers.
You're such a sucker.
And Capers tomorrow night at Hammergrail, so if you're a Hammergrail parent, bring your kids. And I think that's it, so thank you.
Christine.
We had, last Thursday, Holly and I attended the Bridge to College kickoff dinner for the mentors and their mentees for the new program. Well, it's the second year, so this year, we did outreach to the community to have mentors and it was, I thought it was a great event. It was really nice.
And it had a good turnout.
It did have a good turnout.
Next up on our agenda is our presentation for this evening, our State of the Schools
Okay, good evening. Tonight, I'm going to touch on several different aspects of the district. To start, I'm going to do a quick recap of our strategic plan, talking about what our goals are for the current year. I'm going to share some of the school climate survey results, looking at some of our construction, our enrollment projections, and then, this is kind of the kickoff for our budget, although Judy will get all the hype next, in our next meeting when we officially kick off the budget, so. So our mission statement that we revised just about two years ago now is to educate, prepare all students to reach their potential, discover their purpose, and be engaged community members, along with the core values, academics, character, community, and wellness. So how does it all tie together? Our strategic plan is really our overarching five-year look at how the district is doing and we have annual goals and action plans with measures to assess how we're doing. This is a work in progress and all of that ties into our priorities when we begin our budget development. So all of the things that we have proposed or will continue to propose tie into the strategic plan and the goals of the district. So this is a slide, actually, I shared this earlier in the year. As I mentioned, we have 72 metrics. They are work in progress, so we do tweak those from time to time. But when you look at some of the areas, what we did is decided, did we meet or exceed our goal? So for example, if you look at the first line there, increased percentage of students in district benchmarks in grades three to five on I-Ready. Our baseline for that was 65%, so our year one goal was 68% and we met that. And you can see our year five goal is that our students are up to 83%. Granted, this is a one-year measure, so over the next couple of years, we would anticipate that our, we might make some shifts in these because over two years or three years, we get a better picture of how our kids are performing. Some of the academic metrics where we did not reach our goal, you can see that there's similar. And again, these are mastery level results, not just passing results. So some of them are very close, but again, after another year, we'll have a better sense of were our goals, are our goals attainable, or do we need to make some adjustments? For the other, character, community, and wellness, some of the areas where we reached our goals, you can see that, looking at some of the discipline, we met some of our goals in looking at in-school suspension, total number of discipline referrals. Part of our measures in our strategic plan are to break down our student population, so we're not only looking at the entire student population, but we're looking at our students who struggle the most, namely, some of our special education students, our economically disadvantaged students. And we also look at race when we break down into our climate survey results. Some of the areas we did not reach our goal, you can see some of the discipline areas we did attain and some of them we did not. Again, this is one year worth of data, so I think after another year, we'll have more accurate measures moving forward. So to highlight some of our academics, some of this, Mr. Hurst presented in his academic update a few meetings ago. So all of our schools are in good standing. We did have two schools this year who are deemed recognition schools, which mean they met or exceeded measures of interim progress for ELA in math, chronic absenteeism, college and career readiness. This is under the new ESSA standards, which are part of the new federal legislation. We do continue to have strong ratings. This is from the Buffalo Business First. We've been number five for a couple of different years now. And these are some of the schools that we do look at. We don't just compare our results to suburban council schools. We look at other schools across the New York State that are similar in demographics to This year, we were very fortunate and Glenmont Elementary was recognized as a blue ribbon school. This was one of the only schools in the area to be recognized. And a few years ago, you may or may not recall, but Glenmont was a school that had to actually write a local assistance plan because their special education students were underperforming. There was a large gap between general education and special education. So for them to, really, over a couple of years, they really worked hard to address that issue and be named a blue ribbon school was just a great event for them. Some other highlights, Mr. Hurst noted some of these in his presentation. We have a very high number of students taking the AP exam. In 2019, 478 students took 958 exams. We had 211 members of the class have a three-year academic unweighted average between 90 and 100. We have six National Merit Scholarship finalists. We have many students who are in the Fulton Montgomery, which are regional and national art shows. We have a very large percentage, those of you who've attended many of our music concerts, 31% of the class participate in some type of music ensemble. And a B.C. student is representing Albany County as part of the New York State Student Inside Albany program at the state capitol. So our students are very well-rounded. We have a large percentage of students participating in many different aspects of our academic and co-curricular programs. If you look at the upstate top 10 proficiency, again, Mr. Hurst talked about this in our three-through-eight performance. We talked about our ELA and some of the things that we're doing to look at that. We're still in the top 10 overall in performing quite well. This does reflect, obviously, we talked about students opting out at the middle school Regents exams, if you look at our mastery rates, you can see where Bethlehem falls on the five core regions among Buffalos, this is again Buffalo Business First, top 10 schools. You can see that we're performing very well in all of our regions exams. This is from 2018 results. Related to our action plans, our goals for the year, we are doing program reviews in lab school, where languages and ENL and library. We're also looking at, as I mentioned on our metrics, we look at the subgroup populations that historically have underperformed and how we can close those achievement gaps. Looking at reading specifically in grade three, trying to get all students proficient by that grade. Mastery rates for regents, RTI for academics and behavior, instructional technology, and we are currently looking at homework and grading policies at the high school and middle This was something that I presented to all the faculty and staff early in the year to give a, really, an overall visual, visual of what staff could help with in many of our goals. This was presented to transportation, all of our faculty, and looking at the big picture for what everyone can do and then narrowing it down by the different levels is how, what is your role in helping us to meet our goals? And I've actually seen these hanging up in some classrooms, which was nice to see, that they didn't all make the recycle bin. To highlight a couple of programs that are relatively new, for students, when we're talking about students who struggle, we have a GROW program at the middle school and you can see on the right-hand side of that slide, this was a quote from a parent about the GROW program commending how much it's influenced their child into being more successful. And GROW really is a small focus group. It's really aimed at middle school students who need help with organization, time management, so that when they, excuse me, when they enter high school, they're more successful. And based on the preliminary group of students who were in GROW and are now at the high school, all of those students are being successful in passing their classes, so that's a good sign. It's still a small group of students, but preliminary data is good. Also, this year was the first year we started what's called the BEEP program at the high school. And this program is intended to really be an individualized program for students at the high school who are struggling. They may be out of school for a while and it is intended to be a transition program for students. It can act as credit recovery. It's a short-term transition for students to get back on track and get back into their high school classes. And so far, the feedback we've had from this has been very positive. In special education and student services, this is an area that there's been a lot of work this year in looking at different areas, particularly looking at our lead work group, lead program at the high school and re-envisioning what that looks like, looking at our skills across the district and how do we include students who are currently in skills in more mainstreaming opportunities and how do we look at more co-taught programs, which you'll see is below that. Also, looking at reading and we know that special education students, for the most part, struggle with reading, so how can we improve our reading instruction so students are more successful and we're closing those gaps? In technology, this has been obviously a big area in the last few years with the one-to-one initiatives. And you can see, this is a little graphic to highlight the different aspects of technology that our staff are using. We added some tech integration specialists, elementary tech coaches this year for the first time. We have new interactive LCDs, some new software titles. And then, as you heard, Ray Nardelli at, I believe it was our last meeting, talking about the new privacy requirements under New York State Ed Law 2D. Looking at character, character is a big component when we look at some of our equity. We look at many of our co-curricular offerings. We have professional development to look at cultural responsiveness, incorporating programs to inform students about school activities. One of our big goals is to try and get as many students involved in some activity because research shows that students who are involved are more successful overall and develop more opportunities for leadership and community service. So one of the goals, to look at professional development to better understand equity and cultural responsiveness. And we've been working with Generation Ready. They've been here several times this year. We have a group of about 40 individuals across the district who have been working on this particular topic and really looking at what does equity look like for all of our students. So Generation Ready conducted what's called Equity Walks and it's really a snapshot in time of what things are we doing well, what things can we do to improve upon, things that were maybe not where we need to be. And every building got a report on that evaluation and we'll work, look at the different areas and decide how can we work together to improve in this particular area. And this is the, from Generation Ready, this is the continuum of cultural proficiency for where we're rated. And you can, we fall generally within the cultural blind list to cultural pre-competence across the district. So our goal is obviously to move toward that cultural proficiency end. And this is just some highlights of some of our character programs at the elementary, middle, and high school where we want to make sure that students who are doing the right thing and doing, showing outstanding character, that we're recognizing it. And community, this is one of our goals as well, looking at how do we reach out to the communities. I mentioned the highlights was one way that we wanted to provide more outreach to the community so they had a better sense of what was happening in the district. So we're promoting the district highlights, as I said, developing assistance to provide outreach for families who have limited resources, improve opportunities for family mentoring, and provide more workshops that are of interest to parents. It's, this past fall, some of you, I think, participated in this, No Place for Hate sponsored a community walk. It was a great showing for a first time and I think it was a real nice community builder and maybe get people out who typically wouldn't come to something like this. Some photos of different activities around the district. And Christine mentioned the Bridge to College program. This began last year. This is another great way to build community outreach. Last year, we started small and the high school's looking to expand this. So we got a great turnout of community volunteers to act as mentors to many of our students. So we're looking forward to the outcomes of this program. And special education also has a very active parent advisory committee. This was formed back in January. It had existed a while before that, but then had kind of disbanded. And some of the events that have been happening are communication, reading, talking about out-of-district placements, mainstreaming, and the topics that were generated came from parents. February 12th, there's a special education, an IEP information night, and a date to be determined later, there'll be one on social, emotional, and behavior information night. But the topics that were presented were of topics of interest for the parents who attended that advisory committee meeting. Wellness is another initiative that we think is very important, not only for our students, but for our staff. So some of the areas that we're focusing on are the social-emotional curriculum at K-8, professional development for staff to enhance their health and well-being, looking at improving attendance, safety and security, and implementing sustainability initiatives. All fall under wellness. And this is preliminary data, but we have really been working at attendance and how do we improve students who are at risk of being chronically absent and students who are chronically absent. So you can see the trend just in a couple of years with much of our outreach, our principals, our staff really encouraging students to come to school, not miss days unnecessarily. And you can see the trend is very positive overall for the district. And this is at all levels. And you'll see, not as great of a drop, but certainly still a downward trend, which is what we like to see, for students who miss 10% or more, which are deemed chronically The zones of regulation, if you have elementary students, you may have heard them talk about some of these things. So this is what we're using in the elementary program to help students really understand their feelings and emotions and how to best deal with it. So our counselors and social workers are working together to go into classrooms with the teachers and students to do particular lessons focused on these various zones of We also have been looking at school start times. The committee began meeting back in August of 2018. We did hire School Bus Consultants, which is a group that was reviewing transportation, cost, belt cost, bell time. They're currently doing an analysis for the different proposals that they had offered, and the plan is that the committee will reconvene probably in March sometime to hear the results of that analysis. They have been in and out of district and working on that since our last meeting. So their proposals were to basically, they came up with four that they presented to the committee. That third one that's grayed out is one that the committee felt that really did not have any support. The first one seemed to garner the most support. And so School Bus Consultant is currently looking at the transportation analysis to look at how many, would there be any costs? Would there be savings? What are the routing and ridership efficiencies? And what does this look like overall for the district? And that is their goal, to come back and meet with the committee in March to talk about that further. And then the committee can move forward based on some of that information. Onto the school climate survey, which certainly falls under wellness, character, and many other areas. So we had a good turnout, particularly of students. This is given to students in grades five through 12. It's given to instructional staff, support staff, and parents. So you can see that overall, if you look at many of the results on the school climate, they were very positive. 80%, or 70% and upwards is quite positive. And these categories are grouped by the type of questions that were asked of all the various groups. And the questions vary a little bit, depending on what group you're a part of. But they, for example, the school participation, there is not a bar for parents because that wasn't a question that related to that group. But you can see the results overall are positive in these areas. Emotional safety, physical safety, bullying, cyberbullying, substance abuse, and emergency preparedness. Really, one of the most negative ratings we had was on substance abuse, and obviously that was much more prevalent at the high school. And you can see that students and parents both rated that quite low. And bullying and cyberbullying, although that was a little bit lower, the results were more positive this year than they had been last year. So I'm hoping that's maybe a positive trend we'll keep seeing. Physical environment relates to things like, we've heard this, temperature in the buildings, cleanliness, so that one is a little bit lower. The instructional environment, mental environment, has to do with emotional health and well-being. And discipline generally has to do with, do you think the discipline is fair? I feel, you know, that there's a group of questions relating to overall discipline within the buildings. The demographics of our student population who responded to the survey, you can see And when you look at one of the questions, that's relative to actually the work that Generation Ready has been doing with us, and one of their recommendations was that many students and staff responded that, oops, not sure what happened. The instructional materials that we use do not necessarily reflect everyone's culture and background. So that's an area that certainly, based on the feedback from students and feedback from Generation Ready, that we will look to improve upon. Another look at, one of the questions related to cultures and backgrounds, people of different cultures or races get along well at this school. And while these are relatively positive in general, you can still see the disparity between the different groups and how they respond to that question. So again, an area we need to continue to look to improve upon. Just looking at, not all of the questions on the school climate survey here, but some of them that are part of the metrics on our strategic plan, but also some that we feel are important, you can see are very consistent from year to year, which is a good thing. We'd like to see some upward trends. The one question where we asked, I regularly participate in extracurricular activities, schools, and clubs. Last year, that was 94%, but the question, we did change a few questions on the climate survey. Last year, many of the questions read, students at this school regularly participate. And we changed a few of them because we wanted really to know, are you specifically involved in this, or are you doing this? So our goal for the school climate survey in our metrics is, we want to know how many students are actually participating in co-curricular activities. And the way that question had been worded didn't reflect that. So 75% is probably a much more accurate measure of how many kids are involved in activities, and our goal is to improve that. You can see, temperature in the school is another one that, although it went up, it's still relatively low. And another low one is still, again, students not feeling that they can talk about their feelings, although we did see some upward trends in the elementary, middle school, not as much in the high school. And alcohol and drugs, as I mentioned, the substance abuse was one of the lower ratings overall on the climate survey. This is from instructional staff, again, very similar results. And the bottom question, where cyberbullying is a frequent, frequent problem, dropped a little bit, so hopefully we'll see that continue to decrease over time. For support staff, we didn't have as many support staff complete the survey this year, so we're working on a way to get more results. Again, the results are not that inconsistent from the prior year. But I think having a larger turnout of people doing this would be much more helpful. And parents, so you can see, again, very similar results from last year. We did have, the majority of parents who did complete it this year tended to be middle and high school parents and less elementary school parents, so that may be a factor in some variations, but I'm just, I'm not 100% sure if that's why or not. And looking at overall enrollment, we do have the Capital Region's planning report, and you can see that this is from their data. Their projected enrollment has been very accurate for the last couple of years. I think they've been off by one or two students. And they're projecting that our enrollment will continue to slowly decline. Our current enrollment is at 4,322 students. You can see overall the elementary ratios and middle school and high school below that. Part of the assessment that we get in our long-range plan is looking at, how does housing impact our potential enrollment? The housing development and residential development in general is down a little bit from the last couple of years. And, you know, as we've talked about, you never can project the homes that are currently for sale and who's going to move into them, which could make a difference in your enrollment. But you can see by this chart, there's been similar homes for sale in the past several years, and that has not seemed to make a difference on our overall enrollment. So I don't anticipate that being a real factor anytime soon. So currently, we have a building project. We talked a little bit about the high school LMC, and we have 111 projects district-wide, and we're expected to be complete next fall, which is hard to believe. It seems like we just started. And just a few pictures for, I think, ah, there we go. This was before it was completed. New gym. The playground. This is the auditorium and will soon be looking much better. The baseball field. New windows, the middle school. The bathrooms out at the field, they are done. And here's an image of what the auditorium will look like when it's done. And finally, going on to the budget. Obviously, when we get into the budget, we want to make sure our expenses equal our revenue. So the budget vote is May 19th. And as the next few meetings go, we'll be talking about all the various aspects of the budget. Just looking at what our budgeting has looked like over the last 10 years, the average budget increase has been just over 1.4%. And you can see each year what the differences has been. And along with that, with living in the tax cap world, you can look at over, again, the same time period, what our percent increases has been in regards to the tax levy. Our average has been just below 2.2%. And looking at the next few meetings, next meeting, Judy Keough will kick off our budget with an overview. We'll also be talking about the bus replacement and transportation and technology. In March, we talk about operations and maintenance and athletics. March 18th will be the instructional and special education budget. The goal is in April 1st, that the board would make budget decisions and expenditures. May 6th would be the budget hearing. And May 13th is the meet the candidates night for anyone running for the Board of Education. And May 19th is the actual vote. And that kind of sums up the state of the schools, if anyone has questions.
Do you have any questions?
You're not going to rip up my speech?
No, I'm not going to rip it up. Next on the agenda is recognition visitors on an agenda item. If we have any visitors in the audience who would like to speak to the board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come up to the microphone. Next, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through five.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Just thank the different groups for their donations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 13.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had two quick questions on policy 4321, provision of special ed services. I wrote down last sentence, question mark, but I don't remember what that means. Do we have it?
The policy shall remain.
Oh, yeah, so we added language, says the district will also provide students with disabilities with supplemental aids and services for extracurricular activities, is how I read that. I just wanted to make sure that that was as broad as we intended it and that...
That's true. If a student with a disability needs an aid for an after-school activity, we provide it.
No, okay, maybe I'm reading it too broadly in my mind.
Are you reading it? I know how you're looking at it, is if they don't have it in their IEP, that they could say that they want it.
It would be in their IEP.
But I think that's what she, are you saying, like, it doesn't read that way? There should say, per the student's individual...
I mean, I guess it's implied with the CSE reference, because it would be in their IEP if the CSE was approving it. I was just making sure we weren't promising something that we couldn't deliver, but...
Right, and the whole, this whole policy is, relates specifically to students who would have an IEP, so...
I had two other things. 4531, which is the field trips policy, I just wanted to make sure that the, I know we had had prior discussion about overnight field trips and chaperone policies, and I know that there's a reference to the district policy being followed, and I just wanted to see that the, hear from the policy committee that we thought about that when we updated this, and that we feel comfortable that that covers concerns that we've had previously.
I was not at the last policy committee meeting, so I can't comment on that.
We didn't talk about that.
I don't believe we talked about that specifically at the policy meeting.
With respect to this one, because I think we were looking at it for a different purpose, but I know when we looked at this the last time, that was something that we were conscious of.
In 18, December 2018, we looked at it. So we did add language in the information for faculty?
The last time around.
Right, when we reviewed this last time.
So you think this covers any potential issues? In terms of enforcement?
I can see without being there that they looked at it. This, I believe we were looking at it from the transportation angle.
Right. I was thinking of...
I believe we talked about that last time we reviewed the policy.
I mean, as long as we chose things that were, you're good.
I think that was revamped right away.
And 5310, I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you guys for putting together the mobile devices policy for the elementary schools. I think that was really important for us to have, and I appreciate that. That was all I had.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to speak to the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come forward to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. Monday, February 24th, at 5:45 PM, there's a facilities committee meeting here at the high school. Our next regular board meeting is on Wednesday, February 26th, starting at 7:00, anticipating an executive session starting at 6:00 here at the high school.
I believe it says LMC.
And, yeah, it says LMC, but I assume they're all going to be here in the cafeteria.
And also, isn't the facilities committee meeting on Tuesday?
Tuesday, yes.
Oh, Tuesday, the 25th. It got changed.
I should know.
And then the next regular board meeting, following that, the one on...
And then, the next regular board meeting, following that, the one on February twenty-sixth, is on Wednesday, March fourth, here at the high school, starting at seven, anticipating an executive session starting at six. And the meeting after that on Wednesday, March eighteenth, also here at the high school, starting at seven, anticipating executive session starting at six. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Meeting adjourned. Pig students, if you guys want...